Okay. I'm. Sitting here tonight is myself, David Morgan, Chairman, Mark Travella, James Steck, Ken Edwards, Christopher Smith, and Carrie Viva. Also present is Nate Nardi Cyrus, the Assistant Planner. And at this point, I would ask if everyone has had a chance to review the minutes of October 11th, 2022.
Yes.
And are there any additions, corrections, deletions?
Not for me.
Does anyone want to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? The first business tonight is a matter that we started on October 11th. The applicant is Jose Borja and the location is 3828 Toingford Street. And they're seeking a variance, the regulations. Are they in the hall?
They are.
Okay. One of the issues that I think some of us had was the existence of three meters at that property when it was only supposed to be a two apartment building. Did everyone get a copy of an email that was sent by EverSource?
I did not.
Okay. If I can just read it into the record. This is from EverSource from Terry J. Wells. It was sent October 12th, I guess. Subject 3828 Toingford Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Hello, I am writing you to confirm all three meters at 3828 Toingford Street, Torrington were installed on June 18th, 2002. So. And that was, thank you, and signed EverSource. So that that house had three meters, I guess legally installed by EverSource going back to 2002. So they have been there for more than 20 years. I don't know how the rest of you want to proceed. If there are any other questions you want to ask of the applicant? If you have any matters you want to raise to the committee?
Well, I have a question, but I just don't know how to ask it. So the meters were installed at the same time as an upgrade of service? Would a comment have reflected on the zoning of the building to install three meters separately? Or were the meters installed separately only because there were three units being addressed in the up in an upgrade? Because the power company doesn't define our zoning. So what if there was four meters? What would that have to do with zoning unless there's some connection? I don't understand it. Because the house was not conforming when the meters were installed by our records. There's a question in there somewhere. Anybody have any ideas?
Well, I guess I could say that this is, yeah, and as you're correct, that our zoning is not defined by EverSource. They don't, they don't check before they install their meters with us to confirm that they're in compliance with our zoning regulations. And as far as the Land Use Department is concerned, you know, we don't, we wouldn't take that into account when we're determining whether or not, you know, they use that property.
Are they required to build permits when they put meters with your office?
Not with our office, no.
With building department or, you know, they're required?
I would assume that with the building department, they have to, they have to get a permit for that.
Well, having had meters, you know, been changed on the property, so I have, it's an application for the permit, if not for safety and inspection, but it has nothing to do with the building's usage.
We use it sometimes to demonstrate, you know, if there's a building that's out of compliance, we'll ask them to remove a meter to, you know, to help keep it in compliance so that they can't flop back after enforcement has taken place. But that's the degree that we get involved.
Is this, well, is this one of those, one of those, so I know?
Can everyone on the Zoom hear them?
Not clearly.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're all having a problem hearing you. I'm sorry.
Listen there. Is it too awful or too soft? But how close to the mic should we be? Pretty nice. Can you hear me? David, are you able to hear us now?
I can.
Okay.
I can hear you now, yeah.
Go ahead.
So the question I had was, a lot of times when I have people applying for building permits and things, because it goes along with that, that it requires the sign off of multiple different departments. So like, you know, they have to run it by different groups. Is that the case with the EverSource request for a meter installation? Do they have it set around the different departments and get the, the checkbox checked off?
Yeah, I mean, that's the discretion of, of building. And usually those kind of things are arranged between the two departments. Because we feel like that's something that we need to be getting eyes on. But I, I don't recall. I didn't vote to see if we had a sign off in the records on this property at that point. And I don't think we would retain records back to 2002 anyway on that kind of thing. So I don't know that I can confirm whether or not we signed off on it as a department.
Can I also add that when you are an absentee landlord, it's actually common to have more meters than living units anyway. I used to be a landlord. And when you have common areas, you're not supposed to charge that to the residents. You're supposed to have a separate meter. So you could have a two family that has three meters under those circumstances. It's really not an indicator of the number of living units. And I also used to work in the building department in Simsbury. And electrical permits, a lot of times, don't go to the individual departments there. I'm not sure about Torrington, but that would just be considered a service upgrade. We wouldn't have referred that to the assessor's office or anybody else.
Thank you for that, okay.
These were installed prior to the applicant getting the, purchasing the property, correct? So he perched, purchased it with what he viewed as three apartments and three different meters. Whether it was appropriate or not is another issue, but that's how they acquired the property. Is that correct?
Well, didn't he acquire the property thinking it was two family? Originally, I mean, from last meeting, when it was advertised, wasn't it not advertised as a two family building? Because should we, should we, we should probably get up on the, up on the podium here. No. Can someone answer that question? When the property was purchased, as conversation from last meeting, wasn't it purchased as a two family house? Right, so it was intended to, we might want to the. My phone. And then. We, so we hope the hearing opens for another hearing. Did you guys bring anything else in to submit to the ZDA about these property in the past or any permits or anything like that? Like evidence of its use to the, with three apartments? Or did you bring anything in today?
We didn't bring anything else.
So answer.
David. I'm trying to understand exactly what they said. Did they say they thought they were buying a two family and found it was a three family?
Well, they noticed that there were three apartments and wondered why. And said they noticed the three meters. But the house was listed, if that's the right term, listed as a two family, to which that's what they were purchasing. Seeing that it had three meters. So the house was still advertised as a two family. And that's what they were buying.
Well, the, the minutes from the last meeting said that Ms. Borja gave a presentation of their request. This property was a three family house when they originally bought it. Then Mr. Steck inquired if they had any permits or paperwork demonstrating how the property would be used. And Mr. Nardi Cyrus said it was a three family house or a two family house. And he explained the assessor card for his property states the two family house, which is preexisting nonconforming. And there is an illegal conversion to a three family house prior to Mr. Borja's purchase. So when he purchased it, it was a three family house. Whether that was legal or not is a whole other story, but three apartments with three electrical meters that had been installed 20 years ago. And nothing had been done evidently to stop it from being used as a three family. So.
So what was that you said, David, about legally the house was identified as a three family? Is that even a question? Because if it's legally a three family, why are we discussing? We have to prove.
No, it's, it legally, I guess, the, the use that we have on record for the city is as a preexisting nonconforming two family. So, so it's, that stuff doesn't allow, right, that stuff doesn't allow two families or three families.
Okay, that's right.
So what it was, we have records of it as a, as a legal two family before zoning. So, you know, it's allowed to, to remain, get in that use. But three family, those are the, the usual nonconforming, four nonconforming.
Okay. That's what I was. Can you hear us? I'm thinking there's a no. David, do you want to, can you use the chat function to see?
I'm just having trouble hearing you, but go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, there's just, there's no more questions from, from this side out here.
Does anyone on the Zoom have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion? Nobody wants to make a motion? And what would that motion be? I would move that we grant the variance and allow him to continue to operate it as a three family home.
I'll, I'll second that.
And now we can have some discussion.
What's your, sort of rationale for that? Can you give me, David?
No, I can't.
He's asking for your rationale.
The meters were installed 20 years ago. It was operated as a three family house. He bought it as a three family house. I think that there is some responsibility on, on that nothing was ever done prior to him raising this, this issue. I don't think that there's any risk to other neighbors or other houses to grant this variance. I just think it's fundamentally fair to allow him to proceed with what he purchased, given that it had been used that way when he purchased it. And I was concerned, and, and my question back in October was when were the meters installed? And they're all installed 20 years ago and turned into a three family home 20 years ago. So I think she, he should have the benefit of that when he purchased it. That is my rationale.
I, I can, I can go along with that this time. Is this, is that what you're gonna press the rest of the neighborhood?
Um, I mean, I don't know for the rest of the neighborhood. It's, but, you know, both myself and the city planner recommend denying the application because use, a use like this isn't considered to be grandfathered like certain things that might be like the, like bulk regulations, like things like the SEP MAX for structure, the sort of like accessory structure that existed. You know, the fact that it's becoming more nonconforming. Again, this was discussed in our memos. And all I can say is that the Land Use Department recommends denying the application.
I would tend to agree, therefore I vote to deny the application of the variance.
Does anyone have any further comments?
Nate, can I just clarify? You have a full board, so I'm not allowed to vote tonight, right?
Correct.
That's correct.
So you're denying the, the variance?
I am.
What's that?
I am, yes. He's, he voted to deny.
The motion, the motion that was seconded is to approve the variance.
Yeah.
He is voting, he is gonna vote against that, which is fine. That, that's absolutely his right. But the motion before the committee is to approve it, and that's a yes or a no.
Okay, so it's a no for me.
Well, let's have a, a roll call. Mark Travella?
I vote no.
James Steck?
I vote yes.
Ken Edwards?
Vote yes.
Christopher Smith?
I vote yes.
And David Morgan, I vote yes. So the motion carries four to one.
And we can discuss afterwards about how you can, you know, we can get that on the land record for you. So I'm going to stop by Land Use Office at your next convenience or call. We can talk about that on this one way to the end of the meeting. We can talk about that, too.
Are we ready? Are we ready to move to the second matter? This is variance is sought for 85 Kloski Street in Torrington. Set yard, setback variance on the side yard. And.
I'm sorry, David. Oh, to interrupt you. Is one of the people representing Kloski Street, are they going to be sharing their screen or?
Could you do that?
I can do it, yeah, I can show you.
Mark, is anyone in the auditorium on this matter?
Yes.
That the applicant, I can't see him or her.
There he is.
Hello. All right. Then with, with this hearing, the applicant and his representatives have the right to make a presentation to the committee. We will be able to ask questions of them. And then they'll have an opportunity to make a closing statement as to why this should be granted or denied. And then we can move to a disposition. So if the applicant would like to make his presentation or have his representation, representatives make the presentation.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Kenneth Verka. I am a professional engineer and licensed landscaper. And I have prepared, prepared the survey plans for this variance. With me tonight in the audience are two of the partners at only the site, Brian Berg and Ian Rosenfield. And the, the site is, is maybe familiar with some of the commissioners. It's the former St. Mary's Church on Kloski Street. It's actually on the corner of Kloski and Forest Court. And it's no longer a church, but there are, there are two buildings on the site. There's the former church itself, building that still stands. And there was a classroom building that is also on site. And the object of tonight's variance is the classroom building. My clients have, are looking to utilize that building for residential apartments in a, in a multi-family use at this point, because it's a fairly easy conversion, the way the building is broken up into spaces, to turn those into apartments. The site is in R6 zone. So it does have zoning setbacks to start with. And those only setbacks are a 25 foot front yard setback on both Forest Court and Kloski Street. And then there is a minimum eight foot setback, aggregate setback for the two side yards. And utilizing the eight foot side yard setback on the southern side adjacent to the school building and a 12 foot setback, and make up the aggregate 20 foot setback distances for the church building itself. The church building is in compliance with the R6 zone. However, the existing school building is preexisting nonconforming. That does have an overhang that comes to within eight point, I'm sorry, 3.8 feet of the southerly property line on the site. And the southerly property line that you're looking at on the map would be the property oriented at the bottom of the map. And the large rectangular structure is the school building itself. And it's, it's fairly close to Forest Court. And the front of that building is also preexisting nonconforming with a distance of 8.1 feet to the overhang. So, so there's already a history of, of nonconformity with that building. What my clients are hoping to do is, as, as I mentioned, they're, they're hoping to put 15 dwelling units in the building, 13 two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom units. And what that does is that kicks in Chapter 6.8 of the zoning regulations for multi-family uses. And Chapter 6.8 does have a series of different setbacks depending upon which zone. And in the R6 zone for multi-family use, the front yard setback stays the same. However, the 20, the eight foot minimum slash 20 foot aggregate setback for the side yards changes to a straight 30 foot setback on both side yards, which would make the building, the classroom building more nonconforming. At this point, there is no plan for any use of the church building itself. So it's really not part of this application. There are many things that could go in there that would be just fine because that building currently meets the R6 zones. So depending upon what they plan to do in the future, they may be back in front of this commission or this board, and they may not be. But for now, the, the focus is on that southern building with the two side yard, with the side yard setback. And the building being 3.8 feet from the property line, which would require a 26.2 foot variance. The thought is, is that they're, they're not going to change the exterior of the building. They will clean it up some and spruce it up and, and, you know, paint and, and do whatever is necessary to make it look good. But it's not, they're not going to do any additions to that building. It's a, it's a historic structure and they plan on, or they hope to keep the site with the two existing structures intact. Leave them the way they are and utilize them. And so that there actually is repurposing site buildings that have not been used for quite a while. And so at this point, if anybody has any questions regarding the map, we'd be more than happy to answer. If you have any questions regarding the use, my clients would be happy to speak to that.
Nate, I have a question. Was mailing made to people who own land adjacent to the property?
Yes, we received the, the cards for that.
Do you, you have all the cards?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Nate, do you have the cards?
I, I do have the cards.
Okay, and you're satisfied that it was sent to all of the people who were to receive notice?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have questions of the applicant or his representatives?
I have no questions.
I can't see Mark or Jim, so I'm not sure what, oh, there you are. Okay, do either of you have questions?
Well, so we have, the only question I was thinking of is I was just looking at the footprint. Just the entrance and it says wood ramp and things like that. Are you incorporating any kind of a new just entry kind of design for that or are we just gonna stay with the ramp?
It'll say the wood ramp for now. And, and that's a good question. I'm glad you brought that, brought that up because we have an eyeball zoning issue as well down in the along Forest Street, there's a driveway entrance to the site. And we are showing proposed parking to utilize the existing paved parking area that's there. And there just so happens to be approximately one full parking space in the front yard setback. And so the Torrington parking is not allowed in the front yard setback. So what we've chosen to do there is to make that space an overly sized handicap landing space and put a van space next to it. So technically, there won't be any vehicles parking in the setback area. That area will remain paved and it will be used for van access. Loading or unloading. So somebody parks there without sticking it into it.
Well, I guess I'll just say for the record that that space preexisted, so that already exists for their purpose and it's already paved there. So parking that preexists is allowed to remain in the setback. So this would work either way, if you need, if you need the extra spot eventually.
Well, we're, we're helping to clean up, you know, some of the nonconformities. And in this case, it works perfectly because the wooden ramp is a handicap access. So it's the closest spot to the ramp.
And, and I guess with your design experience recently with on this on the building department, adding, like, leaving better egress from the building, they have just been through all that, and you've sort of talked about the egresses. It, just for the future, you may come back.
Not at this point, we have not. The egresses are either straight out to Forest Court or to the rear parking area, so there's, there's a lot of options available.
Does this project by any chance go through an architectural review?
It's not, it's not slated to because they're not doing any material improvements to the facade of the front of the building. It's going to look pretty, pretty modern. It's actually a little bit sad. Um, they're fixing it. It's going to look nice enough that, uh,
Did you re, remove the iconic statues of the former?
The, you know, city planner Jeremy Liefert said, you know, basically made the determination that it was below the threshold requiring architectural review in a pre-application meeting.
So it's going to be just a very nice mid-century dwelling till later on. Very familiar with this school. Nice.
I have no further questions.
I have no further questions. It's a great idea.
David? No questions from our end.
Okay, does anyone on the Zoom have any questions of the applicant or the representatives?
I don't.
All right. Is there anyone in the forum on the Zoom who wants to speak either in favor of or against this application?
Wait, one person. You can first play the question.
Okay. Then, does anyone wish to make a motion?
Um, yeah, we actually have one person who would like to make comments. There's, there's a person who wants to make comments, David.
Excuse me?
Uh, there's a person who wants to make comments. If other people on the Zoom call, can you, you know, relate that to David at the beginning here?
Sorry.
We love Zoom.
Sounds all kinds of problems. David, is there a question out there?
I I had asked if anyone wished to make a motion, and then there was some conversation I couldn't hear, so I'm not sure.
Yeah. I believe they said they'd like to make some comments before the motion. Sorry.
All right. It'd be nice if they were in view, so we could see people are there. Could you just, for the record, say your name, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Mark Lewis, and I'm the president of the board of the Worthington. And the southern border, which I think we're chatting about tonight, and the variance of Botschardland. And I just found out about this on Friday. We just received the letter. I do believe that Mr. Rick has focused on it out on the first, but our lovely male assistant did not get it either till last Friday. I have a concern that if this variance goes through, I don't know a lot about it, but it would, it perhaps might provide a more intense use of this land. And I wanted to be careful. I'm, I'm the steward of that property, and I am not opposed to this. I've talked to Brown himself. He's a lovely gentleman. They just want to make sure that that all, it doesn't impact the lovely residents of the Worthington. And that's why we're doing it. I'm concerned it could be, as we move along, that it could be used more intensely.
Mark, could you? Could you hear what he was saying? Sir Ken or Kerry, could you hear what he was saying?
I could, yes.
Okay. It sounded like he has a reservation about this, and maybe the applicant or his representatives could address the questions he just raised.
I'd be more than happy to chat.
Hi. Hi, it's a very good question, and we
Fran, Fran, you?
Oh, hi, I'm Fran, I'm one of the applicant. I spoke to Mark in the past, and I think it's a fair question, and we want to be good stewards of the site, particularly the historicity that it brings. We've been looking through the research and historic usage of the site. It has been used as a school, which has had higher catastrophe, there's a number of people in the past, and it's been primarily vacant the last at least half decade from my understanding. So we would want to take great care in making sure that we are being good stewards for the property and making sure that we are monitoring usage and usage, making sure it's, it's brought up to a good building that the outer surrounding, surrounding community can use. Thank you for that. I guess I'll ask the question, is this where your application ends, Ken? Like, like, when you, if the board approves this, do you have to go like a zoning for anything after, or do you have to, like, what's the next step?
The next, the next step is to go for multi-family housing with a special exception permit in front of the planned construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak?
I, I did have a question for Mark, though. You mentioned that, and I'm, I'm going to misuse the word, I'm going to say aggressive use of the property, but I just want to know what your concerns might be that would give you hesitation for the usage of the school as a residence. And, and I realize what was, what was there prior last year that was a bit concerning to the entire street and Forest, Forest Court. So I just wonder what you're thinking.
My only comment is, is once the variance is granted, and I'm not, I'm not an expert at all, and it's, it's just that the, the use of it could change in a in a way that would impact that whole area in a more intense way. Don't, I have no idea with somebody with, I don't know the final outcome of the plan. That's the issue.
I mean, it sounds to me like you're finding out doing a multi-family apartment use of the unit.
Are you thinking of like the activity of what may go on there, like traffic or a number of people, or I'm just curious what you're thinking? Given that the building's there, and I don't think we would be approving anything in a similar way, going, you know, being built. I mean, it's just about the usage of St. Mary's School as it sits.
As I said, I just found out about this on Friday, and I spoke with Nate today, and everyone's been very helpful. I, I, I just don't want to see that whole environment disrupted. We're right, I have, I have elderly folks that live there, and I want to be protective of them. I have no reason to doubt Brown and his, his team, that they won't do all the right things. I'm just, but I just would like to know more, and I don't want to be in a position where it gets passed, and then all of a sudden things start to happen that are adverse to the area.
I have just a site question that you most certainly can answer. Does the stone wall wrap around that whole corner?
It does.
Property and go down into your property?
Yes.
It does. Okay, I just wasn't sure. Because I know, I know it lines the street, and it certainly lines part of Forest Street, but it does go around that square.
It does.
Okay. That's, thank you very much. Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is, this is Kenneth Verka, just, just to add to answer and questions you may have, but the use they're proposing is, is going to be high-end apartment use. It's, it's not affordable housing or section you know, wherever, wherever it's called. It's, it's going to be for young professionals to move into the area and give them a place to live, so you know, a fairly quiet neighborhood and really not bother anyone.
How many units again were you proposing into this school?
15.
15?
15.
15.
15, 15, 13, 13, two bedroom units and two one.
That's what I thought.
Otherwise, they'd be really small, small.
Yeah, nice size apartments, those classrooms.
It's the huge concept.
But you can be, the height of the rooms, too. It's pretty dramatic. Nice, very good. I don't have any more.
I have no more questions, David.
And no one in the public is there to ask any further questions or comments?
No.
Okay. All right. Then does anyone wish to make a motion concerning this application?
Make a motion to approve it?
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Mr. Travella?
I vote yes.
Mr. Steck?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, so it passes four nothing. I'm going to abstain because I, I had a lot of trouble hearing this, and I apologize for that, but so it passes four zero.
Thank you very much.
All right. Is there any other business? Or anything that people want to bring up? Mr. Steck, how, are you going to stay on the board?
I'm investigating that now. I have to clear with the permanent administration.
Okay, well, that would, that would be wonderful if you stayed on. If not, Kerry will have an opening for a real, a full member, but we, we will see. Anything, anyone have any other comments?
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, move to adjourn second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, then we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Hope you feel better, Ken.